I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the regaining justice from all.
Have roll call members?
Trustee, uh, Mayor Moore?
Here.
Trustee Trombley, yeah. Trustee Martin?
Here.
Trustee Southwick?
Here.
Trustee Garrett?
Here.
Do not entertain a motion to approve the minutes of previous meeting.
So moved?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, starts in discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, you guys have it. Do not have a presentation of petitions, communications, and notices and general question period for members of the community. Does anyone wishes to speak?
Uh, how about your new directories?
Oh, good.
And I have more if you need more for the office. Um, as you know, we've had the H.R. airport terminal and we're hoping to have an open house for the public. Uh, we're trying to decide how to do that in tour groups or however, there's some security issues, but whatever. So, um, the first time home buyers grant is still available for folks. We've had three people in the town, or three parcels in Towne-Champlain gone through the home buyers, so first time home buyers. So if you know of anyone who's interested, have them contact me. It seems to be working well. Uh, foreclosure office, uh, auction is coming up. I don't have the right date, June something other. There are five parcels in the Towne-Champlain. Uh, I don't think any of them are in the village at all, eventually, in the town. Then there's also hazardous waste day. It's posted at the convenience station, hazardous waste, what they've got at Scarlet Falls. Again, if you need the day, give me a call and I'll find that out for you. Um, I have a favor to ask. Um, as you know, I'm involved with the 400th anniversary of Lake Champlain and Hudson River. And we're asking all the communities to pass an Explore New York 400 resolution so you can become a 400, a New York 400 community. If we can ever find money for banners, we'll have a banner up, they'll say this is a quad community, quadres de pénelle. So, um, I'll give you a copy of the sample. If you can pass this reservation, we'll put your seal, we'd be very happy. Any other questions? Simple enough.
Slayne, can you help me out here a little bit with today's newspaper on that? Do you know what's, what's happening with the CD technical program that they're continuing to report you?
Yeah, um, the Aaronocle Institute, they were taking over some of our buildings and we have worked with them in that layout. And it was going to be quite successful, isn't it? Like, we had decided on parking and everything. Suddenly FAA came out and said, you've got to charge them fair market value for their lease. Well, they can't afford that. And we're trying to talk FAA into not doing that, but they're not going to at all. So there's a potential that they might move to where Canoe Bear is now, in the old airport. That, that, that's a nice, because we have to buy them out in order to move from the old airport to new airport. We have to buy all these tenants out. We have to buy the hangars and so they've all been appraised. And, um, that, that one is the one right now we're still dealing with. But, um, they're thinking maybe moving there, it might work just as well for them, if not better.
I don't know much about the program, but it seems to be a...
Excellent, excellent, especially if we get Laurentian Aerospace, because then you'd be training people to work for Laurentian.
Thank you.
So that, that's the scoop on that. It was a disappointment. You never know with FAA. We just got approved, we heard Friday, to continue as part of the MAT program, military installations that are closed. So we're going to get another $300 million dollars to up those sort of projects, so. Yeah, we've been quite fortunate. Our federal representative said it's really helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Slayne. Appreciate that. Uh, was there any other, uh, public comment, you know, members of the community?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep?
Is there a public hearing tonight?
At seven o'clock.
There is, okay. It's in on the agenda, I just looked at it.
Should be.
Is that the older gem?
Uh, yes, it's an updated, exactly.
Oh, okay, alright, thank you.
Okay, and now we'll proceed with the report, White's Angel reports, codes enforcement.
Um, it's been fairly quiet this month. There was the floods last month and the aftermath of that, a couple of buildings around tenants and landlords. Health department was involved with one of them. Um, I did have a request to look into some junk issue from the Lussenhoff property. I called the county on this because the file is this thick on this thing. And they asked me to hold off for a couple of weeks because apparently she's getting the property back. They've given her back the deeds, she has to file them and she hadn't filed them as of Thursday. So the county prefers that once she files the deeds, then she's the legal landowner. And then I can write her a letter, but there's been many letters written in the past and nothing's ever come of it. So I don't hold a lot of, of hope out for this. But then on the same breath, the treasurer told me that they're foreclosing on her again because her taxes aren't paid again, so. I think the cat's chasing the tail there. Um, other than that, I spoke with Amy concerning, uh, the deals with issuing appearance tickets in the village. And the powers that the judges don't have to write or issue warrants to have people show up in court. Somebody decides not to show up in court, there's nothing we can really do. That's something that has to be addressed by the board with the attorney on how we're going to do this. So I'm waiting to hear how, how this is going to turn out. Other than that, we had meetings, Mr. Fleming, Ace Hardware's opened up. Very few building permits to speak of, a few decks, and one or two pools, that's about it. That's it.
And the new pool regulations of having the alarms on them?
Yes, all pools have to have an alarm on them now.
Okay.
So.
You want to go into that a little bit further, that's first I've heard of that.
What this is, it's an alarm, it's just like a motion sensor. If someone were to enter the pool and this alarm is activated, it measures, uh, ripples in the, in the water and sends out an automated alarm. To prevent kids from actually falling in. Um, where a lot of these things are happening and people aren't aware of is are these blue pools that you see around. They, they're, they put them up on Saturday, take them down on Sunday. These have to have these alarms now. Now, these alarms, I've checked with a couple of pool companies. I mean, the average is about $135, up to 600 depending on what kind of pool installation you want to have. So they have to have an electrical inspection, they have to have the pool alarm, and they have to have a fence around them. In the past, people have always said the pools are 48 inches high. New York State is saying no more, they have to have a fence, so. There's going to be a lot of complaints with pools, there always is every year with these plastic, or these portable pools, I guess.
Well, there are a lot of drownings in them, believe it or not.
Yes, there are, that's why they come out with this. And the other thing that, uh, New York has come out with is any, once you issue a permit for a pool, you assume it's like a permanent installation. And after, say, five, six years, the liner goes or something major happens with the pool, people have always just, you know, fixed them up and, and they're ready to go. Now, they have to get another permit to fix their pool because of this pool alarm clause. They want to make sure that, you know, they're being put in and the only way you can do it is through the permitting process. So, you're probably going to hear some complaint.
And I was up at Lazy Days, um, last week and they are getting the alarms and I think they're just a little under 100. One of the best prices I've seen. And that's right here in Morris.
Yeah. They have to be UL approved or have a rating from some, um, regulatory agency, ESTM. I mean, there are some out there that have no approvals on them, so. When I check them, I, I do look for those stickers.
But that is only for new permits, it's not for existing until you fix or replace.
Right.
Just so people understand that.
Okay, thanks, Mickey.
Appreciate it.
Uh, okay, well, I'll proceed with the mayor's report. Village Attorney Dave Marshall has submitted a proposed local law to comply with the flood management directors from FEMA. And we will review that for the next meeting. We just got that in today. We have also forwarded a proposal from Northeastern Central School requesting annexation of Mr. Marshall for the next steps to be followed. The boil water advisory was lifted. And Greg Martin will work with Kim on the cable franchise agreement with Time Warner. See that to excuse himself because he has a vested interest in that. So Greg volunteered graciously to continue on. Okay, that's all I had. Board of, trustee Trombley?
As Jeff said, we met, uh, we went to the town meeting, uh, last Tuesday night. And, uh, two ladies came up from Albany, Pat Johnson and Katie Hope. And brought a lot of information with them, gave us, uh, a lot better explanation as to stuff that we need to be looking for. Some new information that went into effect, I think in 2005, that is not currently in our contract. So, there's two, uh, members from the town that are going to be working on it and Greg and I will sit down with them. And my understanding is that we won't have our dates of the contract be exactly the same, so let's stagger them a little bit. But they're going to come up and work with us on this and make sure that we have everything that we need. Brought some new information to light for us and things that we were not aware of. So it was really a good meeting with them. And they're very, very nice ladies, they're very easy to work with, so. We look forward to working with them and hopefully to get this resolved. And our contract date is like August 1st, but they said there's not a problem. If they find that we're getting close to our date and we don't have our contracts signed, they automatically issue a three-month extension. So, if it takes a little longer than we expected, it's, it could maybe be a problem. So, I look forward to working with them.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, trustee Barton?
Uh, it's, uh, as Mike said, we had a shared services meeting on May 1st. Excuse me. And some progress was made, we now have an attorney that's going to help us write the municipal agreement between the two villages and the town. I'd like to thank Senator Little for, uh, the member item that will help us out a great deal. Speaking with Mike earlier, we should have some contact from the Department of State here in the next couple of weeks.
Yes, I spoke with Kyle Wilber on Thursday, or his assistant. And she assured me that we would have a contract within two weeks. And if we didn't, make sure to let her know because something obviously would be wrong if we don't have it, so. Because he seemed to be having a tighter timeline all of a sudden.
Well, once we get the contract, then we'll be better. Movement will be a little bit better. Excuse me. Mike, if you would, can I go back to you and, and would you mind going over the, the fire issues here in, in the area? I know we're in a very dry state here. What does someone need to do here in the village or in the town, I suppose would be more appropriate. I know we don't have a burning issue here.
In the town, there's, there's absolutely no burning except by permit. And the only thing I can issue permits for are, are brush, grass, weeds, that type of stuff. You can't have, garbage barrels are out, you can't burn paper, cardboard, uh, synthetic products, anything like that. The only thing you can burn is brush and grass. The villages, there's absolutely no burning at all. I did make a mistake in issuing permits, someone from the village came and applied and they put a Route 9 address down. I didn't realize it was in the village. It was a little bit of an uproar over that, but, uh, I guess we got through that. So, now I ask them, but, any municipality, it's a state law, they can't burn it. Uh, you get into this area of fireplaces and this kind of stuff, I'd have to say no because, uh, houses are so close to one another that, you know, you may be burning in, in one fireplace, but the smoke is going in the neighbor, so it's nothing but trouble, I believe. So, I, I say no to any burning in the village.
We do have regular burners that they start around 11 o'clock at night. I don't know if anyone else is smelling it, but it's very heavy and very putrid almost every night regularly around 11 o'clock. Starts up, fills your house up because you've got your windows open now.
If you know where it's coming from, the best thing to do is, is you call the fire department out. Because the fire department will go out, they'll put the fire out, they'll notify me, the next day I go out there and you're going to get a warning. The second time, we'll write a ticket. I mean, that's, that's the way, we, we got to stop it. And there's no reason to have to burn anymore, like, years ago.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, we as a board encourage a lot of public service. And I had the opportunity to speak to Janet Patric the other day about some kids. This Global and National Youth Service Day. And we had four individuals from Northeastern Clinton Central School. Ethan McCarthy, Connor Herdick, John McDonald, Johnny Ray Curry. Who, uh, on their own time and on their own effort went down, down in the main street of, of Champlain and picked up numerous garbage bags full of debris. You know, just as a, as a public service, working through the school and through this organization. And I would like to thank them very much for their effort. And if we could, uh, sit down with Don and maybe write them a letter of thank you for their services and, and, you know, encourage this public service from our, from our high school students. Ian's off and running, saving us some time, saving us some money with, uh, looking at street paving, looking at some other ideas. And, uh, we hope that you continue with your success here. Uh, pickup day tomorrow. This probably won't be here by tomorrow, but pickup day tomorrow, so have your, um, stuff ready to be picked up down by the street corners. And, uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Trustee Southwick?
Uh, the only thing I was going to mention tonight is that there hasn't been any activity on the planning board either, so things are not quiet with regard to that. Greg mentioned shared services issues and Ian passed out a thing that's going to be helpful for us on the paving as far as the contracts go. Looking forward to working with Ian on that. That's really all I have.
Thanks, Steve. Uh, trustee Garrett?
I have a couple of things. I went to this wonderful, um, workshop on managing recreational liability claims and litigation. And it sounds very boring, but it was very, very interesting. And, uh, finding out some basic things that we're not doing, um, to protect ourselves against any kind of claims. Especially with the new boat launch. Uh, we're going to need to come up with some money for some signage that needs to be in place, such as no swimming right by the boat launch. Little things like that. Uh, once the bazaar is done in two weeks, I'll be able to sit down, put it all together for you guys. So you can see the areas that we're deficient in, what we need to do so that at the next meeting, we'll be able to have a proposal for some signage and maybe some costs and whatnot. To get the basics taken care of. But very, very interesting, just things, you know, fixing up things around the village and what our liability, if we don't fix things. Very, very, very interesting. Uh, and it was great to share with other municipalities that were there. It was really very interesting, so. And I've got packets for everybody so I can, you know, give you copies of it all, uh, once the bazaar is done. Until then, oh. Uh, second of all, the picnic table is all set, the handicap picnic table.
It's a temporary, yeah.
Yeah, uh, but it's, it's handicapped, so it works. And he's getting pricing on the pavement, so the grant will be complete. We should not have any further extensions for that, correct?
Correct.
And that is it. Reminder that the bazaar is two weeks away, so everybody, please come. Good time for everyone, great community event. That's all.
Thank you. Now I'll have the report, the clerk treasurer.
Hi, everybody's been copied with the revenues and expenses for April. Is there any questions?
Uh, I just have one on the, I'm going to do one.
I have one on mileage reimbursement, um, and I don't know whether it's a typo. Um, obviously, we definitely need to reimburse employees for their mileage. 428 under water fund. Uh, for Larry, it says for 606 to 5705. Do we do it by the year, should it be done by the month?
Actually, that's only one month. There was a question regarding that because Woody asked for mileage reimbursement. So if you do the one, you have to do for the other. He's only getting one month. Ian agreed to give Woody and Larry the one month that he was here reimbursement for mileage. They have been told that the truck is here for them to use. If they plan, if they want to use their own vehicle, then they do on their own.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I have no problem with reimbursement, it's just like a year thing. I thought it was kind of strange.
No, it's only supposed to be the one month.
Okay, that's what I figured, it was just a typo.
I, I had one that I missed here.
I got one of them.
Okay. Was, uh, repair on the Dodge for $992, what was that all about?
That was, that is finishing up, that, those repairs were done before my thinner.
Okay.
Who was the truck? Woody had John from Champlain Auto take the truck over there. They changed, I believe, all the, the filters, the gas tank, and then found out that that wasn't it. And then it went to the dealership.
Correct, and the air filter. It was, uh, they took it to the, the first location and it was repaired, you know, put a part on to see if that was a problem. Oh, that's not it, let's try something else.
So next time, we're going to choose a different vendor?
Yes.
Uh, the other one I had was the $900 for some type of a permit. Is that in the annual fee?
Yeah, that's one year fee for the flood hall.
Okay. That's why I just want to make sure.
I would like to request us to do a price quoting for garbage pickup. We have no sanitation, which is one of the most expensive ones in the area. And if we could get some, um, quotes to see if we can do better. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, entertain a motion to approve the warrant.
Um, we have a couple of changes on warrant, we need to add. We need to add M.A. Jerry's on there for $7,553.04 for the snowplow.
What's was that, what do you mean?
And with that, we need to do some transfers at snow counts into...
Are now those transfers going to be in the motion that we're going, on the next one, that's a separate?
I think, no, they were separate. That's why we had it first, in the most...
Okay, well, that would carry it. Okay, first we need to approve the warrant and then?
So moved?
Second? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, you guys have it? Okay, now, was he, uh, the transfer, we've been making?
We need to transfer, um, into A 5110.2, which is street maintenance equipment, um, out of the snow. Count A 5142.1, $605.06. A 5142.2, $661.28. And A 5142.4, $623.84.
So moved?
Okay, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, you guys have it? Uh, we also have at this time to do our year-end transfers. Woody, do you want to read those to us? And, and does everybody copied on that? Okay, well, maybe you don't have to, uh, read them, then everybody's had a chance to review them. Okay. Do not entertain a motion to, uh, do the year-end transfers then? So moved? Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion is carried? Uh, we now have our purchase requisitions for this month. I would entertain a motion to pay these. So moved? Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
I hope this, uh, did you automate it more, is this what we're going to start using more of, or?
That's a, that's a great product and I'd give full credit to Woody. He treated that on his own board and, uh...
So much cleaner to handle.
Yeah, well, he did several graphs and I said, look, you know, he, it took him a little while, but he, he got it all cleaned up. It's, it's nice. The only drawback is that you have a beautiful front and then you got all the, you know, fax quotes that, that tag on them. But it still has a nice presentation, professional, good job.
Ian, what's the, could you tell, could you enlighten us a little bit on the cost installing third water pumps? That's the, the $2,395...
That's installing the power box to support that third pump. The, the pump is completely installed and ready for electrical hookup. And, uh, that's, we have three quotes there in Lee, I guess. $2,300 was the, the best price that we got for that quote. So once that's online, then we can alter our pumps. So if we have to clean the main tank or anything like that, we always have that backup. It's been in there for a while, so it's good.
Any further discussion?
If we get approval to pay these POs on this year's budget?
Uh, isn't that where they come from?
Right, well, normally with a purchase request, it's, um, approved and then we wouldn't get the bill for next month. But we've got the bills and so if you approve them, they're all ready to go on this year's budget. That's why I made that little note, to add those to the warrant.
To the warrant position.
So when you make your motion, we probably have to make the motion again, uh, to adjust that because we kind of want to... Lack of, they, yeah. Means kind of motion includes, includes those additional bills besides the M.A. Jerry's.
For this year.
Whatever you said, Don, that sounds good to me.
Okay.
I know what you mean, but I don't have the pretty words.
Okay.
Okay, and the second, are you okay with that?
Yep.
All righty. Any further discussion, trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwick?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. Okay, it's seven o'clock, so we'll, uh, temporarily adjourn the meeting. To have our public hearing on, uh, our local law. Do you want to read that one? This, this actually does two things, it combines, you know, a couple of the other laws that we have and make them into one.
Um, notice is hereby given that the board of trustees of the Village of Champlain, Platte County, State of New York, will, on the 14th day of May, 2007, hold a public hearing with the municipal offices on Main Street in the Village of Champlain at seven o'clock. Or hereby, or therefore thereafter regarding the adoption and passage of the following local law. Local law number one for the year 2007 for the Village of Champlain. Local law to amend and supplement Article 1 residency requirements of Chapter 14, Officers and Employees of the Code of the Village of Champlain. This local law sets forth the residency requirement that the village clerk treasurer, the deputy clerk, the registrar, of vital specifics, and the superintendent of public works require them to reside in the county place. They are not residents of the Village of Champlain. The above is a summary of the local law being considered a per se. Full text of the law is available for inspection of village ops during normal business hours.
Okay, open the floor for a public comment?
Mr. Mayor and trustees, uh, name's Chuck Connor. And I just want to thank or mention that I don't think that this is in the best interest of the Village of Champlain residents to have the superintendent live out of the village, especially such a distance away. I think that there's a lot of occasions that the superintendent should be in the village. There's weather differences between there and here. Uh, I, I think there was reasons, many reasons, for that to be the way it was originally. And I, I just don't think that it should be changed. Uh, I'm sure you already made up your mind, but I just expressed my opinion. And again, in the best interest of the village, I don't think this is the way it should be. There's a lot of residents that are really not aware of it, I didn't realize it was in the legal notices. But this is the first forum that was discussed on the camera. And residents really aren't familiar... camera, and residents really aren't familiar with it. I spoke with several that were very shocked that the board is taking this action. And I would wish that you maybe defer your voting for another month, so the residents would have a little more say in the matter now that it's gonna be on the camera. And, uh, maybe next month vote on, or do this one.
Thanks, Chuck. Any public comment?
Well, I had something. I didn't realize this was on tonight, but I, I would act as certainly as Mr. Connor, so I certainly agree with that. I'm really a different actor. But I am a resident of the village and have been for many years, and intensive, many more years, but, um, I agree especially with superintendent public works.
Any other comment?
No, I'm just here to back Chuck to it. I know, I'm agreeing with him.
Okay, thanks, Ray. Okay, at this time, entertain a motion to, uh, pass local law number one, two thousand seven for the Village of Champlain. So moved. Uh, second. Okay, any discussion?
I, I kinda, you know, I see no harm in giving it a month for the public to be more, more aware of this. Um, we do have Woody in place for notifying Ian if the weather has changed here. We have taken that definitely under consideration. We have, did not undertake this decision of an outsider, uh, coming into the village without taking that in consideration because just from, you know, mores to us, the weather's a total difference. Uh, so we did, had discussed that as a board, that, you know, Woody would be overseeing the weather if he'd be.
Well, checking the streets, that type, it's always...
Out of order. Yeah, they're kind of, period. Okay, uh, well, just one comment I wanna make is we haven't been able to fill any of our positions locally. Uh, we have Juanita, who's not a village resident. Donna's not a village resident. I think that's why over the years, these, these, uh, laws have been changed one by one because we're a very small village and do not always have somebody that is qualified. Not to say that anyone isn't qualified, but this does occur on occasion in a village this small. Any further discussion?
Did you go out of public hearing yet?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, Charlie. Go ahead.
That's right, so.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
And you were voting at a motion in, in public hearing, which you can't have.
Okay, go ahead. Do you have something to say, Charlie?
Well, you know, I, I, I just, again, I just wanna reiterate that it's, it's not to the best interest of the village. And I know the board has made their decision, and I don't think it's a fair decision to the residents of the village. This is something, when the superintendent was hired, that's the way it was. After the fact, you're changing the rules. That is not correct. That's not the right way it should be.
Okay, now, you oppose the public hearing portion. Do you wanna remake the motion? Well, I'd like to say we haven't made up our mind. That's why we're here to vote. Obviously, you're making an assumption that we've made up our mind. We've put this before US in the public hearing forum, and then we're still gonna vote on it. It hasn't passed yet.
I can't say anything else.
That's all, so. Okay, wanna remake motion, Steve? Yes. Second.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this?
Would there be a problem with putting it off one more month?
I don't see any reason to, but...
Well, just in case, you know, there is more public feelings that, you know, there...
Well, you could do that with any local law. You could continue it as long as you wanted. It's a matter of are you prepared? You brought this up last month. I mean, how long do you need to think about it? Okay, there's no further discussion. Proceed to vote. Trustee Chonglin?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
No, I won't go public. I'm done.
Okay, trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
No.
Mayor Moore, aye. Local law is passed. All right, proceed with the report from the superintendent.
Uh, this month in April, we have, um... Yeah, right off the bat, first thing we had this month was some cleanup from the river, the flooding. Um, right after we got that finished off, we started with the curb stops, started with the cleanup of the sidewalks and stuff. Um, knocking down some of the curb stops, found some water leaks. We had a water leak on Main Street for Friday. Took a whole day. Took a day and a half early. Started on Thursday, get it all prepped. Um, after we got done our winter cleanup, started working on this wastewater plant. It was well over a hundred tons. It's taken a month to process that out. Uh, the, yeah, it's pretty amazing the quantity of stuff that's down there. The dump can only take so many tons from us at any given time. There's a shared program. Platform brings up stuff. All of these, all of these other municipalities bring up theirs. So we can't just flood them with a hundred tons or fifty ton or whatever the, you know, mass quantities. We have to take our, take our turn and fall in line with everybody else. So it's taken a month to clean that all out. Carl Smith at the Peterbilt factory there, he's helped us out significantly and actually has a great cost savings to us. And he takes care of all of that. So great kudos to him. He helps us, helps me a lot. I know he has, um, getting that stuff out of there. In the past, it was two hundred, two hundred dollars for a rental truck, plus our million hour cost, plus our man, plus the fuel costs and any repairs. I get a flat rate fee from Carl, which makes it really great. And it's the same price we paid before. And we don't have to do anything. We just help the truck. Mickey said we had a few meetings with, um, Mr. Fleming regarding the road project up there. Uh, I brought Doug Ferris into that meeting, uh, with Mr. Fleming and his engineers, so we could all have engineers talk on the same page. So we came up with a punch list, five major items to get forward motion on that project so we can get it cleaned up. There are utility lines that run underneath, PVC pipe that runs under the road, which was not on the, um, original plans. So the as-built prints after it's all said and done will reflect that. We brought that up in the meeting. The compaction factor tests, we have not received those yet. So we're still waiting for that information. The drainage slope out. How much speed is the water pickup on that percent of grade? Take vice the slope of the ditch. It's an erosion problem. We don't wanna have an erosion problem. Mr. Fleming ensures us that he has this information and that they are working together with Mr. Ferris to get this, uh, information put to us. There was some discussion about waiting on the asphalt on that particular road for one winter season. Let him build the houses in there, uh, establish residencies. And, and the thought process behind that was to not lay fresh asphalt and then bring a twenty-ton concrete truck up that road and start dumping concrete for a foundation. Um, try to save some wear and tear on the new road surface. My thinking on that is that it's a three-year in running process to get Mr. Fleming forward move on this. And I think, I think I would like to see the road finished now so we can step forward. Then he can build his houses, work with Mr. Mickey to get that done. That's my stance on that. Rubbish removal and street cleanup. I worked with Rouse's Point. Uh, they brought their street sweeper over, helped us out a lot. Uh, went around the neighborhood and cleaned up the streets quite well, uh, while we were picking up rubbish and, and bags of lees, stuff like that. There's a lot of post-winter cleanup down Water Park area or Water Street area. Um, getting them logs out of there, getting that rubbish out of there. I'm working with NICEAG as well to get some of that stuff removed some of their, because their, their intent is to put a line through there. I'll explain it later on. Gas, excuse me. Um, MA Jerry's finished our truck. We picked that up today. It was finished last week. It took a little more than we expected to. The total actually came out to almost nine thousand dollars because there was other bent things as it went on and on. And I was, I was quite frustrated, but in the end, it's finished, done, and the bill was almost nine thousand dollars. Seating you gentlemen and ladies are signing off a warrant for about seventy-five hundred dollars. Mr. Sorrell got it down fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, that's remarkable.
He's a master negotiator.
He is. He's a great guy. I mean, just, he is a really good guy. He really helped out us a lot. And that right there will be a cost savings for the nine hundred dollars I had spent in that dump. So kudos to Mr. Sorrell for that. He did a great job. Um, contact tank for the village. We flushed that out this season. Uh, when I first got here, I looked in there and said, oh my God. But we worked on it. We pressure washed it. We got it all cleaned out. And that was prior to the street flushing, the hydrant flushing. And it all really came around the, we're having discolored water. I made a lot of phone calls. We received a lot of phone calls, made a lot of apologies for that. But for the village's sake, the water system was even, it's cleaner now than it, than it certainly was before. These guys really put a lot of effort into it. They explained to me the concerns that they're there, and we acted on it and got it all cleaned out. Parks. Um, been working with AMI in regards to some of the issues down there. Signs, we need some signs posted. Mill swimming by the, the, the lunch. Uh, we worked on a table, a handicap table. Handicap tables are very expensive. I think anything that's related to handicap issues are, as, and that's understandable. A lot of safety involved with that. Um, we have made a table that will accept handicap, uh, personnel at this time, but we'll have room for improvements in the future. Uh, we've got something there, and I think Amy and I talked about it. We could probably do more. For the, it's for the people, it's for the customers, and I think we should put forth a little more effort. Where are we at? Expected to lose the, uh, the bridge. And we did some, some inspections. We did sewer line inspection under Elm Street Bridge. It's missing some insulation on there, but I think it'll make it through the winter again, provided it doesn't get hit. Um, the water line, but... Elm Street Bridge, what'd they say? Sewers under the Elm Street Bridge. Uh, water is under Main Street. The water, I know you guys have my notes, but since I'm talking about that, if you don't mind, I'm just gonna jump right ahead of what I talked with NICEAG. I spent the afternoon with some gentlemen from NICEAG, and I have for the last few weeks, but today we really figured out, I really understand more what NICEAG's future plan is for their natural gas line to go across Main Street Bridge. Doug Ferris and I spoke once before prior to Mr. Fleming and I during that meeting, and he gave us a quote of over fifty thousand dollars for water line repairs on the Main Street Bridge. A lot of money, and that's the bare minimum cost. So I start thinking, where are we gonna get that money? And what else can we do without spending fifty grand? Uh, NICEAG is going to, is proposing to, next Monday, they're having a teleconference, their home corporate office, to bore under the river and get away from the bridge altogether. If that is their case, and they will, if they do that, I've been rest assured that we will be given the gas line that runs across the bridge at this time. Now, it's an eight-inch line, and we can run either a liner through that, or we can remove that line and install our own six-inch line, or replace it with another eight-inch line on those existing hangers. Move our line at least a foot, it's not higher, out of the river, out of the ice's path. That will cost us some PVC pipe to get it in there, and some labor hours to put it all together, which is a significant cost savings to, uh, removing the existing line and then relocating it. If you relocate it on the bridge, you have to have Department of, uh, New York State DOT approval from their engineers to do all of this. So that's another huge cost we don't wanna bear. So my interest there is to save as much as we can and borrow and smile and get what we can from the guys from NICEAG. And if it works out, I think we'll be really happy. Now, back to my list. I don't wanna, I'm gonna jump around. Amy and I had spoke again on the parks, one time, Water Street. There's a lot of asphalt and rubbish and, and erosion from that winter storm, the ice storm that comes through. I would like to remove the asphalt and all of that, that, uh, eroded asphalt, concrete, and all that stuff. Topsoil it, seed it, and turn it into an ice park. Uh, with that, the park then would lose its ice rink. If possible, move an ice rink, basketball court slash, on River Street for a future plan to, um, save on the erosion from, from an ice rink, if that's possible. Those are some of the plans that I have for next month. Cleanup. Of course, I'm not gonna build the ice rink yet, 'cause I gotta clean everything. We gotta find some money for the, the ice rink, but... I'll stop now, 'cause I'm long, but, any, any questions? What's going on?
Some good things looking to... Hopefully, we won't have any ice for a few months.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With, with these things, um, are you now putting in place, um, plans such as a timely manner of removing our sludge? You know, so do you, you know, put in place, like, at six months, where are we at tonnage? Do we need to do a removal instead of waiting and building up?
Correct.
And a plan to maintain the contact tank? You know, how often is it going to be cleaned so we don't get the buildup and get to the point? Um, and also a plan for our trucks to be inspected as they're going out and as they're coming back in, uh, so that we don't all of a sudden find out that we have these major gas leak repairs because of things being bent and not being taken care of properly. I mean, accidents do happen, no question about that, but, um, you know, it, are we being careless with the equipment? Um, and if we put the ownership into their hands with inspection beforehand and then someone else inspecting it, you know, on the return, or, you know, a twofold inspection going on, um, so that we're keeping track of it, um, so that we eliminate all of these major things, so they won't be as major, you know?
That, that was mentioned. I could probably adding to that. When I went to see the guys at MA Jerry that they questioned a little bit of our routine maintenance practices and that some of the repairs bills were associated with the lack of routine maintenance.
Without a domain.
Yes.
If I can answer orders real quick and Steve, I'll answer that. Um, Larry and I talked with Joey, Judy Ross, from Department of Health, and we would like to establish, or we are going to establish flushing our hydrants on a quarterly basis, device, uh, by every, every six months, bump it up. That way, we can flush some of that sediment out of there more frequently, so we can eliminate some of these, you know, um, discolorations in the water and stuff like that. Along with that, the contact tank. Um, we're gonna monitor that and see how it looks in six months.
Mm-hmm.
'Cause right now, I don't know. Because right now, I don't know the way. I need to do it every three months. It's a lot of water to push up out of it. We don't get rid of the water. We save that water. That water just goes from there and gets pushed to the main tank. By pushing it up there, we keep that water. It just drains it right down to nothing in the tank. And then we can clean it. And it's all done with... They got suits on, the whole nine yards, it's all chlorinated and everything. It's all professionally done. And everything's maintained within health standards. But for the tank, we're gonna take a little while and see how that, how it looks in six months. If it starts to get a little ahead of us, then, you know, we'll switch it. We'll do it every four months, maybe every three, however that works out. So there is a plan to do. We're just working in the summer months, seeing how it works. The flushing is an inconvenience for, I think, the townspeople. Maybe that's why it was always done in six months. Because some of the biggest concerns we have is people don't have as much water pressure as they're accustomed to. So a lot of the complaints derive from that. You know, where it's just, it's just an inconvenience to the home. The truck, a lot... I went down there and looked at that as well. And I'm, I'm gonna say that a good portion of that... The truck is quite old. 1989, 89? And when I looked at it, I think that a lot of it was just an old truck that may have not been well-maintained at its prior organization as well as here. So maybe a combination of that. Neglect might be a too strong a word.
Yeah. I'm not trying to point fingers. I'm just trying to look for a better solution going forward.
Exactly. So it's old. It's tired, but it's all new now. And there should be no future problems. I can't imagine that... The amount of force it would take to snap them strings is just beyond me. But you start looking at the cracks, you know? You got a piece of steel this wide, and it's rusted all the way to here, and then it's nice fresh steel in the middle. There was cracks there for a while. Now, was it one season? Who knows?
Right, what we're saying is just to have a plan in place that you're inspecting it and we're catching some of them before they're a major repair. You know, granted, an 89 truck, we're gonna have repairs. We're gonna have quite a few of them. But if we have a regular inspection of the basics and the regular maintenance, as Steve is saying, will eliminate some of these majors if you catch them ahead of time.
Exactly.
That's our concern.
Terry is very well in his PM cycles, preventative maintenance cycles. He is always in there, you know, greasing, checking the stuff out. He's really good at it. He enjoys it, actually. And he won't get them keys up for that box while he's filling your hut. So I think I'm gonna bring my own tool bag in, but... I got a good bunch of guys. I really... I said it before to you folks. I said it in the paper, and I'll say it again. If I didn't have them doing what they do, you know, I'd be just back there, blah, 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 all day long. Because they really, they really know what they're doing, and they feel well. The people have a good rapport with my workers. There's no problem. I haven't run into anything like that. And they speak professionally. To them. Frank, you have a question?
No. No, I have a question.
Amy, you did ask one more question, and it was about the process of sludge removal.
Correct.
If I can explain this belt filter press process, I'm working with Ellenville, New York. It's another municipality similar to ours. And they have belt filter press that they are trying to get rid of. Now, I got lucky, stumbled upon this. Actually, I found one on eBay. $17,000. But it looked pretty bad. Picture's made, looked really rough. This was inspected. I have an inspection sheet on it, and it's in excellent condition. Bearings, how much wear on it, how many hours are actually on it. So I'm working with these folks and their engineers to see if we can come with a really low base price. Again, cheap. So we can get that belt filter press maybe within this year. And then we can get it down there. We can find some how to get that and get it installed down there. That, excuse me, that will eliminate the bag process. And the sledge, when it comes off, is much, much drier, and you can store a lot more on location.
Yeah, why are they getting rid of it?
My int... They're getting... Ellenville?
Yeah.
They're getting rid of it because they got a pump truck. They no longer press their ways. They don't bag it. They don't use their belt filter press or anything. They just take it right from the plant in a sewage truck to another facility and have the other facility deal with it. It'd be like us taking it from here and taking it to Raucus Point and having them process it. So they must have an agreement with someone else that does all that. But it hasn't... They haven't used it in years, and it's in excellent condition. It's got 2,000 hours on it. I have talked with a few contractors, dumpster contractors, and I did have an idea that if we had the belt filter press, we could auger it right off the belt filter press into a 20 cubic yard, which is one of those half-high ones. Truck comes in, drops it, leaves. And maybe every two weeks, maybe once a month, I don't know how fast it'll fill up. Maybe every two weeks, that truck will come back, take the full one, drop an empty one, and go on. And it's done. My intent, though, now is at the bag process to do it every month to two months. I don't know how many we accumulate, because it's all clean. So now we have to start fresh to find out, how many do we start? Actually, I don't wanna collect bags right now. It's nice, it's 80 degrees out, let's put it on the bench. And then when that piles up, then we're... We're starting from fresh, clean slate. We wanna find out how long these processes go. It's a good question, but I don't have any bad answers.
Now, Raucus Point has the belt filter, correct, guys?
Yes, they do.
So we might be able to use them to help them stop what they offered before when they were going, looking at it, you know, as part of the shared service.
The Ellenville folks, I spoke on your guys' behalf, so... I told them, I said, "You know what? For cost savings to us, if you guys wanna get rid of that cheap, you just give me the green light, I'll have guys down there to take the part and haul it away for you." And I want them to think that they're gonna have to pay a contractor to take your part and all that stuff. So trying to really, really save. I'm trying to convince them, if we're that interested in it, if the price is right, that we will move on. That's my intent. Because if eager to get rid of it, and I believe we're eager to buy.
Right. Sounds good, very good.
Okay, Juanita, could you read the correspondence?
Correspondence to Larry Barcom, Town of Champlain Supervisor, regarding new water and sewer rates. Correspondence from Plin County Health Department regarding cross-connection control program training course improved in the 2007 Water Operator's Calendar. Correspondence to Greg Clumming regarding pool reservoir easement through the Cham... Or through the former Champlain Elementary property. Correspondence from Senator Betty Little regarding the village of Champlain. Village of Raucus Point, the Town of Champlain funding in the amount of $30,000. Correspondence from D.C. regarding replacement of existing flood plan management regulations with enactment of new local laws. Correspondence from Plin County Health Department regarding the Town of Champlain Calliphorn testing. Correspondence from Northeastern Sun Central School regarding annexation, annexing into the village. Correspondence from Code Officers, Code Officer Tetra regarding tenant complaint of apartment 105 Church Street. Correspondence to Congressman McHugh asking to support New York Rule Waters Fiscal Year 2008 funding. Correspondence from USDA regarding loan grant program for water systems. Correspondence from Plin County Highway Department regarding road striping for 2007. Correspondence from VFW Post 1418 requesting permission to sell copies from May 14th through the 19th, 2007, and the village's response. Several letters to, of thanks to various organizations for their help during our recent flooding. Correspondence, letters to appointed planning and zoning board members. Letter of appreciation to Senator Little for her support for shared service grants and fundraising funding. Correspondence from St. Mary's regarding extort credit on the reportedly built. Correspondence from Plin County Health Department lifting the boil water order. Correspondence from State of New York DOT regarding chip funding. Correspondence to Greg Clumming regarding rising heights easement from Northeastern Sun Central School. Correspondence from Dean Lashley regarding rising heights punch lifts. Correspondence from Department of State regarding municipal code enforcement and a letter of thanks to them for purchasing our 2007 membership in the ICC. Correspondence from Woodrow Pissel requesting carryover vacation time. Correspondence from Cheryl Radrowski regarding reopening Manny R.
Juanita, I just had a couple of comments on these items. Once again, thanks to Betty for her line item funding for our shared services effort. I think this is a very important thing, and she's definitely a leader in the shared services department. And I wanna thank her again. Also wanna thank Congressman McHugh for his efforts in supporting the New York Rule Water Association. We do rely on them heavily. And we did send letters poured out at his request. And we hope he's successful in maintaining funding for the Rule Water Association. And just one final thing. I wanna say that the village supports the efforts of VFW Post in Memorial Day fundraising and look forward to seeing them and hope they have a very successful fundraising season. Okay, old business. We have Time Warner Cable franchise. I think Kim already discussed that. Cherry Street issue is nothing new. Native vest issues, I believe those are being addressed. We just got a correspondence today from the school on easement. I think they're gonna be sending us some documents on that. GSA meter, I believe Ian is specing out a meter for that. The flood plain management law, we just received that today. We'll review it to act on either next meeting or the meeting after. Okay, for under new business, we have a request from Donna Barcom and Ian Fasking to attend seminar entitled Managing Multiple Priorities Projects and Deadlines on June 29th, and it costs us $79 each plus mileage. I believe that's in motion.
Yes. She's fine, much.
Entertaining a motion, do you want to send them to this?
Make a motion.
In a second?
Second.
Uh, discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion is carried. Also have a request for sewer credit from St. Mary's. I believe they had a leak. We all have a copy of that. I guess they're asking for relief for sewer, because the water did not go to sewer. Entertaining a motion to grant St. Mary's sewer credit request.
Sure.
Uh, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, motion is carried. Also entertaining a motion to obtain a cell phone for Superintendent Fasking, so we'd be able to keep in contact with him.
With a local number? So moved.
A second?
Second.
Uh, is there any discussion? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, motion is carried.
Jeff, who's got another break?
Whoops. Okay, we have a request from Ian Fasking and James Andres to attend the developing a cross-connection control program training scheduled May 24th at Nochar approved fire station from 8:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. So moved. Uh, second?
Second.
Any discussion?
What is that exactly? What does that mean, a cross connection?
Cross connection, so if you have a water line and a sewer line underground?
Uh-huh. How to do what with it?
Well, if they ever intersect, one goes underneath the other one, stuff like that. That's really what I'm gonna learn.
Should they really do that?
That's what I'm gonna learn.
Can't do that?
I thought they had to maintain six-foot, eight-foot separation.
Maybe they do. I'm not really sure. That's why I have to go to class.
Also has to do with backflow, check valves, and wells and separate lines. Protection of water.
Jimmy has a... He's got his license, and that's a credible... That's credited to that class. So that's just helping him lean forward and get more as he grows with that license. And I'm not very well spoken on cross connections, so I need to learn more. Then while Jimmy's a great guy, so I'll figure it out. Thank you very much.
Okay, is there any discussion? Let's bring this back to me, yes. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, there's also one other thing under there that you need to act on. It's number 22 correspondence, so Woody Kissel's vacation.
Uh, yeah, I was getting that.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Okay. So motion is carried? All right, so how soon did you need to get this back?
There's no deadline, but...
Soon enough, yeah?
Yeah. It can wait till next month, sure.
Okay, because we couldn't... I don't think we're ready about it.
It'd be good to everyone looking at it.
Yeah. Okay, very good. Okay, and the last issue we have is correspondence from Woody Kissel requesting a carryover vacation time.
77 hours.
Is there any... What do you want to make a motion? I would like to just make one comment here. We really should try to limit or eliminate the carryover vacation time. I realize in this situation, and I think this happens every year. I think, I also believe we may have an issue with Terry Lynn Court. Has a few days left over also, and I'm...
I think he will. We're using it for his time now.
You know, I... The only thing, we should limit it to 40 hours or something in this case and under a non precedent setting, uh, carryover and, you know, look at it. Take a good look at that for next year. We need to encourage people to take their vacation before the time when it turns out.
I guess we should do this other discussion. Does this go calendar year, December 31st, January 1st, or does it go...
No, this is a...
That's the first one.
Because the way we do it is you have three months from the end of the year to use up what you carry over. And if you don't use it within those three, that three-month or one-quarter extension, then it's gone. That's just the way we do it. Because what happens is you just keep wanting to carry over, carry over, carry over, and not use it. And I think that's what you're saying. You force the issue. You need to take your vacation.
At some point.
With negotiations, can we establish that?
Well, we definitely can bring that up.
Yeah, because that's excellent way to do it. I used to at my prior company as well. If you had to roll over, if extenuating circumstances. For the norm, we shouldn't roll over at all. But based on the fact that there's no way to give them a vacation, you know, then you have three months to use it.
Okay, well, that's something we can bring up at a later date, but for dealing with this request, I would... I mean, that's just my suggestion. Somebody would like to make a motion that we...
Make a motion that we allow Woody to carry over his 77 hours vacation.
All right, the whole 77? But then we're limited to...
We only have two weeks.
It's three weeks.
Two weeks, actually.
Not even.
Yeah, 40 hours, we have 70.
He earned the time.
I think that's what I was gonna say. Exactly, Ken, my thing's the manager.
I wouldn't want anybody taking my vacations now.
Here, if you wanna impose a new rule...
That it needs to be used within three months.
So you gotta...
Okay, well, is there a second on that motion?
Yeah.
I wasn't implying that we took it away. Is there any discussion?
So let's make it clear, how was the motion?
Make a motion that we allow Woody to carry over his 77 hours vacation time to be used within three months of the beginning of the fiscal year.
On a non precedent setting basis, right? Because you have a labor unit now?
Correct.
Okay, any further discussion? Is that okay to add that on there?
Yes.
Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed? Motion is carried. Uh, any motion to adjourn? Anyone has any further to add?
Well, there's one, there, the, um, border, is anyone going to that, um, open house?
Yes, I'm, I'm gonna go to that, that's, I am.
Twenty-fourth.
Scheduled as twenty-fourth.
Yeah, Thursday, May twenty-fourth, which is, if only by miracle, I'm ready for bizarre, but I would like to go as well with my key.
Yeah, they, you just have to, uh, tell them.
Yeah.
I was, I was there the last time, it's, uh, it's impressive, to say the least.
I'll be in class, take a lot of pictures for me, would you?
Probably get shot, fifteen pictures.
Yeah.
Or some kind of search you just don't want.
Bring camera in.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried, means adjourn.
Everybody's tired today.
Yes.
Yeah, that's weird, it's hard.